Annual Public Informational Meeting. This is an informational meeting regarding articles to be voted on by Australian ballot. It's Articles 1 to 16. Just a little history, I did a little research. It was 25 years ago roughly, 20, 25 years ago, that the voters got a petition and petition and passed to transform from the old fashioned town meeting to voting on everything by Australian ballot. So there were some people questioning why, questioning me and questioning why we have an informational meeting and why we vote everything on Australian ballot. Well, the voters chose that, it was probably a year or two after I got on this board that they did that. And so that is a little bit of the history. And we started out by having Monday informational meetings. We didn't get very many people, so I came up with the bright idea, convinced John Ward, the manager at the dime. We all gathered the council on a Saturday morning a couple of times and nobody came. So, you know, we thought it was a way of trying to get more people out to come to the informational meeting. Well, that didn't work. My next stop was, well, we could serve food, but we didn't have a budget for that. So that's just a little history of why we vote the way we do and have the informational meeting. And with that, are there any questions on Articles 1 to 16? And just a little, I'm not going to read every article, but I can briefly. Article 1 is to vote for the mayor and council members. Article 2 is just to compensate the mayor and council members. Article 3 is the city budget. Article 4 is the Newport City Elementary School budget. Article 5 is the bond related to the cleanup of Gardner Park. Article 6 is the Goodrich Library. Article 7 is the Orleans Essex V and A. Article 8 is for RCT. Article 9 is for the Orleans County Citizen Advocacy. Article 10 is for Northeast Kingdom Council on Aging. Article 11 is for Northeast Kingdom Human Services. Article 12 is for Umbrella. Article 13 is for the Northeast Kingdom Learning Services. Article 14 is for the Pope Memorial Frontier Animal Society. Article 15 is for the Orleans County Historical Society. And Article 16 is to grant property tax exemption to the Orleans Essex Visiting Nurse or the V and A. Those are the 16 articles, just, I didn't go into the dollar amounts, but to be voted on by Australian ballot tomorrow. And then Article 17 is for any other business that may legally come before the annual meeting, and that is at 8:00 PM tomorrow night. And so that is the articles to be, a brief overview of the articles to be voted on. And with that, I would open the floor to questions.
I have a series of questions, but I understand you might want to rotate through other people and let me come back if there's enough time. But my first question is a question that I'm really channeling from another resident of Newport. And it really regards the transparency with regard to the budget. So if you look at page 17, for instance, and it happens several times, the city manager's office, and you look at salaries, the proposed salary for the city manager's, city manager's office is $54,729. And I know that you need to add in vacation, holiday, and all the benefit package, which is about another $30,000. So that would mean that the salary expected for the city manager's office is about $84,000. And you would think, since there are two people, if you know there are two people in the city manager's office, you would think, well, that's not bad. For two people, we pay $84,000. That seems like a good idea. But, and that's the way most people would look at it if they looked at the budget to determine whether or not they should vote on Article 3. But what it fails to mention, and what I missed for nine or 10 years, is that there's more salary, and it's just put somewhere else in the budget, not in the general fund budget, but in water and sewerage. And that makes that salary a heck of a lot greater. And it would be lovely if there was just an asterisk or something, or a one, or a little one next to that $54,000, that would let people know that that isn't the entire salary in the city manager's office. Because the question that this resident had was, how would I know? And so I ask you, how would I know, looking at that salary, that the whole salary isn't there? That the whole salary isn't just the $54,000 as that? And I agree, your benefits are separated out, and another $30,000. So one solution I had was what I suggested, but you might have other solutions, or you might say to me, and it's obvious that it's not just $84,000. It becomes, you know, it's just obvious. How could you miss it? So what, what am I missing? So I can tell this resident who doesn't happen to be here tonight, and I don't know, he's on the tube somewhere. That's my question. How, what do I tell him about how he should know, just from looking at this or something in the budget, that it's not simply the 54 plus 30, but it's somewhere else? And it happens with regard to several other divisions of the city as well, where monies get shifted to water and sewerage. But how would you know?
Would you get an answer to that?
Well, we've been through this quite a bit over the past couple of months. And as we have indicated, there is a portion of administrative salaries that are attributed to water and sewer. One, and you're welcome to have the person who's inquired with you come in and talk to us at any time. You don't have to be the spokesperson for the city. We're more than happy to speak to them.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not the spokesperson for the city. I recognize that.
Okay.
But they don't know, they wouldn't know that it was a full 60% that's been shifted. And when you go to water and sewerage, it's all conglomerated into one sewer administration is a bunch of salaries that have been shifted. And how would they know how much of the 92, you're certainly not saying that $92,315 all came from the city manager's salary. See, that's a conglomeration on page 39 of several salaries that have been shifted. So it's really hard unless somebody asks the question, and nobody until this year ever asked that question, to know that those salaries are somewhere else. And you can't even figure out from the 92,315 on page 39 for sewer, and then a large conglomeration for water as well, how much of it came from the city manager's office? How much of it came from anywhere else? So what I'm really saying is, it would be lovely to be able to look at somebody's salary and say, oh, well, that's reasonable, you know? As opposed to trying to guess how much of it is somewhere else.
So maybe what we'll consider for next year is doing that asterisk so that people can see it clearly.
Yeah, maybe a double asterisk for some of the department, a different department like Public Works, and a triple asterisk for the city clerk's office. That would be wonderful. Then we'd know exactly how much money was shifted. That would be wonderful. I have another question, but I'll, I'll ask it in turn.
Are there some follow-up on hers?
Okay.
It would also be lovely if you could itemize what salaries are in sewer and what salaries are in water, and give the dollar amounts attached to each. That would be complete transparency. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions?
Me again? Okay. And then, you know, with regard to that 60% figure, which is that 35% of the salary of the city manager is shifted to sewer, and 25%, we've been told, is shifted to water. It would really be nice, and I would have asked this a while ago, but we switched from questions to comments at some point. So I'd really like to know how with about, I don't know, 50 employees total that you are involved in, and I know it isn't just by numbers that we do this, but 50 employees work in the, let's say, in the city, and then about five to six of them work in water and sewer. And that, there's only four in actually water and sewer, but there are part timers that work there too. How, which is a ratio of about 10 to 1, you could possibly say that you spend only 40% of your time doing everything else, like fire, police, streets, audit. No, I don't mean audit, I mean zoning, supervising, all those things, and interacting with the state, and all of that work, and recreation, and landscaping, and the fellow who manages this building, and all of that stuff.
Budget.
And then 60% of it is in water and sewerage, which is about three days a week that you would be spending on water and sewerage. And all of those other things that are done for the city only takes about two days a week on average. How does, how, how does that happen? And do you keep daily timesheets for this?
I do not keep daily timesheets. The work that I do averages out to the, to the numbers that you have been provided. Some, some weeks are all encompassing in water and sewer, and some weeks are not. And that's the best way that I can tell you about how those numbers came forward. Those numbers were presented to the city council by John Ward. We've made no changes in all those years, and that is something that the council has approved. And I have not made any changes to that.
I'm sorry, and you've not been what?
I've not made any changes to that formula.
Well, that's, that's in itself an issue, because over 12 years, things change. And I'm sure that water and sewerage might have increased a bit or decreased a bit. Recreation might have increased a bit and decreased a bit. And yet that percentage of 40% for everything else you do and 60% hasn't changed. And what, what could possibly take up three days on average every week in water and sewerage? I mean, it's limited.
Have you, I'm just wondering, a couple of years ago, before the pandemic, we had an open house at the wastewater treatment plant. I wonder if you came to that.
No, I did not come to that.
I'm optimistic we'll be able to have another one so that the public can see how involved that building truly is along with the arsenic plant.
But only four employees work in that building full-time.
That's okay. We're doing a number of improvements. We have a lot of updates that are going to be happening to that busy planning. There's, I mean, I don't know how better to say it unless you would like to, and I would invite anybody to pay a visit to that. Certainly, we'd schedule it so that it's all encompassing and you can see it.
Hard to believe that other.
Mr. Bernier wanted to say something. I think he had an answer to some of you.
Sure. A lot of the jobs that Sherrell had mentioned are overseen by me or other department heads. Yeah, Laura oversees us, but the day-to-day stuff within my department, or recs, or zoning, are covered by the department head. If you look at some of the big projects we've been involved with, we've got the water tower project, we've got CSO sewer stuff going on, we've got a pump station going on, Sias Avenue, which is another water project. I mean, a lot of what we do is water and sewer. I oversee the four guys at the wastewater plant and the arsenic plant, and the whole city's infrastructure, the water mains, pump stations, sewer lines. So again, a lot of what she mentioned that Laura is overseeing, she's not. Laura's doing the administrative stuff overseeing these bigger projects. Grants, loans, any of that stuff, that's more of her forte.
I just want to make a comment. Again, you know, this is something, obviously, the next council, I'm not directing anybody to do anything, I'll be off the council, but one of the things, I mean, there's multiple endless ways that one can do allocations, but something that's being overlooked here is that everyone's talking about actual hours, how many minutes, how many half-hours, how many hours. Allocations also include indirect costs. So there's costs that of running something that are indirect. It's not necess, it's not necessarily how many times does, you know, Jane Doe sit down and pump the pump at the, you know, arsenic plant or something. It also includes indirect costs. So things that are indirect, you know, your buildings, your water, your heat, you know, things like that. For an example, for an allocation, as an indirect one's the easiest one to do, an indirect cost in an allocation process is, take the city clerk's office. They spend so much time, they, you know, they do the bulk of the water sewer billing and all that sort of thing. But also their office is in this building that uses heat, uses electricity, you know, equipment that is not built out separately. They, the city clerk's office doesn't bill the city to cover their portion of the heat because the heat heats a building. So there's indirect costs that are also involved in allocations. And again, there's no, there is no one, one single way to do allocations. There's multiple ways that municipalities and even businesses do allocations. It's just, you have to take in consideration the, the physical work being done, and generally you take into consideration the indirect costs.
I don't think the indirect costs are under salaries, though. That would be a different part of the budget.
That would be part of the allocation.
But not part of the salaries.
No, that's included.
So Ms. Dogan, you stated that Mr. Ward was the one who put forth this proposed allocation some years ago. And at some point along the way, you stated in the Chronicle, when you were interviewed with Ms. Ingalls, that there was a time study to support this allocation. And I made a public documents request for that time study. You took it upon yourself to substitute an alternative document, charged me for the public documents request, but not produced the document that I requested, which, by the way, is a statutory violation. You needed to tell me the document did not exist. You did not do that. So it does appear that there has never been a time study done to determine whether or not this allocation is accurate. You have come forward and stated that you have never done one. Mr. Bernier has stated in previous council meetings that he doesn't keep time slips. Mr. Mayor has stated that he simply has to trust the expertise of, of his city officials. So nobody, nobody along the way has done any type of a time study to determine whether or not these allocations are appropriate or not. And I do believe that that needs to occur. And nobody is explaining why these things are not occurring.
I have nothing. I think the, I don't have anything to offer for that at this, at this time. I think we're here to talk about items on 1 through 17, as you had said. I think this is an attack. So I don't really, I don't know how I can respond to this kind of accusation.
Ms. Dogan, this is not an attack. I am a taxpayer. I deserve to know where my tax dollars are going and if it is appropriate allocation. That is my right. You have yet to produce that evidence to indicate that these percentages that have been set by the city officials in any way, shape, or form aligns with what is actually occurring. There's no evidence.
So once again, I guess that what I'm going to say is not going to be satisfactory. We have not made any changes. Any changes would have come before the city council. We have certainly not done a time study to determine how many hours that we've put in water and sewer. We, we do know that by having costs expended to the water and sewer is a cost savings to the water and sewer in the long run. Because if you were going to split that out into its own entity, it would cost you significantly more. We do know that. We have always felt that the way that we are expending and managing this budget is sound and ethical. And as the mayor has pointed out, we have been audited every year and will continue to be audited. We do not feel that we are engaging in any type of wrongdoing or fraudulent behavior or incompetence.
Mr. Mayor?
And I, I will support what she said there because in all the years I've been on here, it was Mr. Ward who presented at the time, a memo to the council requesting the allocations. And at that time, I mean, requesting, yeah, allocating the water and sewer and the general fund. At that time, it made perfect accounting sense. You allocate your time where you think your time is to the different budgets. That's accounting 101. You do the proper allocations, you know? And so, and on Jim Johnson's office, he doesn't keep track of anybody who walks in. He spends 10 minutes on, or his people, Robin or Stacy at the window, when they might have 10-minute questions on water and sewer. You're not punching a clock every time.
No.
Yours is just based upon experience and observations.
I would say my percentage is 25%, and that is for clerk and treasurer total. All right. I think 25% is pretty accurate where I am because we answer water and sewer questions every day of the week. Every time a lawyer or a real estate agent comes in my office, we answer water and sewer questions. We bill four times a year, we collect the money, we answer any problems they've got, we're the first ones they come to. And I'm standing by the 25%. We don't do timesheets down there. I'm independent from the rest of the city, and we've always pride ourselves in my office in being honest and trustworthy, and we do things right down there.
I have to, I would support that completely.
I'm going to go back, I guess, back and forth. Unless anyone else in the audience has comments or questions? Okay. And remember, we are talking about the articles to be voted on.
Yeah, we're talking about the budget.
No, you're, you're steering it towards water and sewer. We're talking about the general fund budget to be voted on by the taxpayers.
Yeah.
You know, and the money, and that budget was clearly discussed at this table very thoroughly for, yeah, how many means, Mr. Wilson, we talked about the budget. And so that's where I want to just remind folks, we are here discussing the general fund, we're not discussing the water and sewer. As I've said, agnazia, that's an enterprise fund. This council has not, at this table, reviewed it. We've reviewed the income and expenses. You have to raise the money to pay for the expenses in those funds. And I'd like to remind everyone that we have some of the cheapest water and sewer rates in the state. I've been told that by many other municipalities in my travels. People look to us and say, how can you do it so cheap? I have actually had many communities say that. Just go to Newport Town, or Barton, or some of the, just even around here, when it comes to water and sewer rates. And so, I mean, if we want to put everything back to the general fund, then you could have a 10-cent increase or more that not everybody would be paying for anymore. That all the nonprofits who don't pay taxes basically would be having, I hate to say, they wouldn't really truly be covering the expenses of what it takes to operate the city. And that's, I think that's one of the reasons why Mr. Ward wanted to allocate times for the different departments. And Tom's department, once again, when they do a water and sewer project, it's not just the four guys at the plant, it's your whole crew. Which is what, 10? 10, 10 people working on that project. So you're allocating that, and you do it, and you try to do a, a budget based upon projects. You, and who knows when we might have a water break or a sewer break, and your guys have to spend all night in below-zero temperatures. I can remember being, standing out there one night with Mr. Bayrock, and you couldn't find it because it was so deep and the ground was so frozen. But that time was allocated to water and sewer at that time. It's not a, it's not an exact science. It depends on what's happening with, it depends on what's happening with the, with the weather. I hate to say it, I'm trying to lose my train of thought, but I think the people of Tom understands what I'm trying to say as far as, you don't know what's going to hit.
Correct. I just have probably one other area that I wanted to have clarified for my own sake, because I've heard two different versions of this. We all know that there are four employees that work in the water and sewer plant, and obviously, all of their benefits are paid for by water and sewer. That makes total sense. Then we were informed that there were four other employees who work part of their time in water and sewerage. And that, one version of it I got from a ex-city councilman, 100% of their benefits are paid for by, in general, I'm sorry, by water and sewerage. And none of them, none of their benefits are paid for by the general fund. I think when Tom spoke the, the other, a couple of weeks ago on the, his section, he described it as those, those benefits are allocated equally to water, sewerage, and the general fund. So what I'd like to know is, the benefits that those four employees who are said to work for water and sewerage part-time, who pays the benefits for them? 100% paid by water and sewerage or some other number?
Tom, I think it's 30%. So 30% of those four part-time employees are paid, their benefits are paid for by water and sewer. 30% of the cost of their benefits.
30% water and 30% for sewerage for a total of 60%?
I think it's 15 and 15.
15 and 15 now. That's, that's new.
That seems to conflict with what was stated when we reviewed the general budget because my recollection is that 100% of those four employees' benefits were being covered.
I don't think so.
So perhaps we need to go to our underlying documents and just check with Becky.
I, I don't think so. I think that was.
Because Ms. Hopkins brought this up during the general review process, and at that time, she was told that 100% of the benefits for those four employees were being covered by water and sewer.
I don't think, I don't, I'm drawing a blank, but I don't think so. I think it's 30.
Mr. Bernier, do you know the answer?
I don't recall.
Well, it is critical because, as I pointed out, I think last time, last, those four employees for the year, the last, the year that we have a full fiscal year, '21 to '22, only worked $800 worth in sewer. So if you're paying even 15% of their full benefit package from sewerage, you're paying more than the, than the amount of labor that they put in. And all I'm asking you to do is check the numbers. And all I'm asking you to do is check the numbers. Some of you will be here again next, next week or the week after. And certainly, the administration will be here then. And if we don't, if we get those numbers straightened out, then we'll know that we're in conformance with state statutes, and that would be great.
We're not violating any state statute. I'm gonna put an end to that. We are not violating state statute. The auditors would have notified us. If, we're audited every year, and I'm tired of hearing people say we're violating the law. We are not violating the law.
I was talking about informing the state statute.
Look, it doesn't matter. I'm not gonna argue anymore because I'm done as of tomorrow, and you can dance in the street, as I said before.
I don't, I don't dance anymore. I'm 77 years old, and I'm not dancing in the street tomorrow.
All I know is when I hear people saying we're violating state law, state statute, we are not violating the law. The auditors, who we pay for, and their licenses are on the line. If they're covering up the city saying, you know, it's their license that's on the line if they audit the city of Newport and we're doing illegal activity. Because once again, you're suggesting illegal activity.
We're talking about what the percentages are. That's all.
But, but that's not violating state statute. I'm not gonna, you know, so, I just, I get my, I get my dander up when I keep hearing that we're violating the law when we're not violating the law. And I really, you know, enough of that.
So, the numbers, I was incorrect at 15 and 15. It's 40% to the general budget, 30% to water, 30% to sewer for the benefits that pay for the four Public Works employees who also work in the water and sewer department.
And that's done not only in the budget, but that's how much you charge to the sewer fund and the water fund for their benefits?
30%.
40% and 40%.
40% goes to general, 30% to water, 30% to sewer.
Thank you.
Is that the same breakdown as their salaries who were signed over? It sort of makes sense. Hold on. She coming? No, the breakdown of their salary is dependent upon where they work.
Thank you. So, that's based on their time slots, correct?
Correct.
And do you know what those numbers ended up being?
No.
Because once again, that's a floating number, right, Tom? Depends on what project it is. Also depends on how many water breaks or sewer breaks, or how often they gotta work on a pump station, or how often they have to go to the water plant and fix something, or it's all... Am I correct in my theory?
You could be working on the sewer in the morning, the water in the afternoon, and something else at night.
Down the road at night.
So, Mr. Mayor, at the end of the time, the pay period, what would keep the city from allocating the appropriate percentage of that, these four employees' salaries based on what they turn in for hours?
Sorry?
Why couldn't you program your software for payroll? So, when, when the stuff comes out of, you know, if, if 10% of the, of their salary is being put in, billed under sewer, then 10% of their benefits come along for the ride?
That would be, that would be quite a...
That's a lot of internal calculations, I think.
No.
I think they could payroll software to do that.
Generally, it does not. Anything outside of the norm has to be keyed by hand.
That's right.
Especially if you're using a payroll company.
And we have hundreds accordingly. New payroll, they have to split out. Finally, you couldn't just put 40% in the general fund and the public, and the Public Works Administration, for example. They use Tom's crew. They could do any, be number, anyone, 15 things during the day. Stacy downstairs had to break every one of those things out and put them in a code.
But, what I'm saying, Mr. Johnson, is that it's already broken out because they're turning time slips in that are getting billed to sewer, time slips that are getting billed to water, time slips that are getting billed to Public Works. So, has anybody even contacted the payroll department to see when it's billed to water and sewer? Couldn't the benefits come along for the ride for that amount of the...
It could if, if we wanted to do twice the work, I suppose.
But let's say, couldn't you contact the software company? Because I am convinced that the software...
I don't know, I don't know who the software company is.
That's the software company right there. Jim's office.
You use Nemrick.
Yeah. That's where it is. Whatever Nemrick allows us to do, that's what we do. That's our software company.
Because they don't custom program generally for every municipality.
No, I think you'll find they're all basically the same.
So, you're saying that all payroll calculations are done manually?
No. What I'm saying is she takes the minutes or hours or seconds in each one of these codes and applies them to that, and the payroll is run through. She does five minutes there, then five minutes the page goes there, and 25 minutes the page goes here. And if you end up splitting the benefits out like that, you gotta do the same thing for the benefits. I mean, it's, it's a lot. I don't think, I don't think there'd be enough hours in a day for her to do payroll.
So, you double the payroll time, which would then increase your allocation because you're spending more time on water and sewer, right?
That's what I'm saying. I don't think there's enough time in the day to do, in one day to do payroll for doing it that way. I think they have to rely on what, what everybody thinks their allocation is and trust that they're doing. You gotta trust some people sometime. Trust that they're doing the right thing.
Tom?
You know, we're just talking about salaries here. Let's, let's throw it out there. Look at all the equipment that the city of Newport, my department has that is purchased through various pieces, through water, sewer, and Public Works. They're shared. Everything's shared. If, if we're gonna subdivide this, then you're gonna have a water and a sewer, you're gonna have a water department, a sewer department, and a Public Works. And each one of them's gonna have to have their own equipment because you're not gonna share that equipment. You're just, you're just gonna increase your costs, like bigger communities, Burlington, Chitney County area. They have a director of water, they have a director of sewer, and a director of Public Works. Well, we're doing it all. And we haven't raised our water and sewer rates in almost seven years. I think we've been doing something right.
No, that's a, that's a different story. Somewhere along the line, they'll reach a going up.
Well, yeah, they need to go up.
And they're gonna walk low.
And I would, I would respond to Mr. Bernier by saying that every single piece of equipment has an hour clock in it. And you know how many hours are being done for each job. I have yet to hear that there has been any type of study done or any type of accounting done.
We truly are beating a dead horse.
Well, the issue is turning on the... What's the agenda? What's the bottom line here? What are we, what are you trying to find out? We have a city that is being run by caring professional individuals who are doing multiple tasks all the time. And we do not have the time to punch a clock on everything that we do because we jump from one subject to another subject to another subject. You are trying to put a burden for what? Pennies? You're talking pennies between budget and water and sewer. It's all gonna get paid, whether you pay it in your sewer bill or you pay it in your, in, in, in your, in your property tax. It's all gonna get paid. We're not saving any money. We're not doing anything. We're not changing anything. You're trying to run and explain the water department as a separate water district. And if you wanna go that route, that's what Tom just said. All right? Now, we have water districts in Coventry and Ivesburg. And you wanna know what happens with a water district? You have a fire at your house, you get a bill for the water that's used on that. All right? We don't have a water district. We have a municipal department. And we have a municipal Public Works Department, and a Fire Department, and a Police Department. And we have our individual budgets. But you know what? We help each other. We do other things. And I'll be darned if I'm gonna sit down and punch a time clock every time I take a fire truck out and, and help clean a line because I'm helping water and sewer. Or is Travis gonna start billing water and sewer because he's doing traffic because there's a water break? I don't know what your end game is and what you're trying to do here, but this has gone on long enough. You are wasting their time and our time with this ongoing bantering back and forth over something that's gonna get paid anyway. Enough! You've been given the opportunity to come in and have one-on-one back-and-forth discussions, but you refuse to do it. For some reason, you wanna do it here in public. If you really wanna find out answers, go ahead, sit down with the people that make the decisions, and ask back and forth. But enough here. Enough.
Yes. The reason that we are doing this is because the taxpayers have the opportunity to see the general budget reviewed in a formal way. The taxpayers are allowed to ask questions on the general budget. And the taxpayers have a voice in whether or not they find the expenses in the general budget to be acceptable or not when they vote on it. The water and sewer budgets have never been reviewed by this council officially in over 26 years. They have never been voted on by the council in 26 years. Whenever we tried to have these questions answered, we're always told, "No, stop this. No, stop this. No, stop this." We can't question what expenses are in the water and sewer budgets.
Nor should you.
I do believe that the taxpayers who are funding the revenues for these expenses should have a voice in whether or not these expenses are bona fide expenses. I mean, basically, we are told...
Did I just say something before?
No, Mr. Mayor, you're interrupting.
Before this gets completely out of hand, I can tell you, before I even got on this council 100 years ago, they never talked about water and sewer at this table.
It doesn't matter.
No, 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 let me hear me out. It's an enterprise fund. You, if Tom needs 50,000 to operate the water department, you gotta raise 50,000. If it goes up to 5 million the next year, you've gotta raise 5 million. If, you have to have a reserve fund also in case the water plant blows up because I sure as heck want my water turned on, or I wanna be able to flush my toilet.
Mr. Mayor, we're not saying that that's a wrong statement.
But no, you're coming across as if we're hiding everything. You wanna slash the water and sewer, put it into the general fund for taxes, and then the tax rate'll go way up. It's as if you have the motive to get the general fund defeated because you're not happy with allocations, you're not happy with the water and sewer rates. That's the way I'm sitting here now interpreting this. You're not happy with any, paying any fees. You know, it's what it sounds like to me. You're not happy paying anything.
Mr. Mayor...
And I don't think we can ever make you or you happy with anything we present or the manager presents or anyone. I don't think we're, I think that's how I'm looking at it now. We'll never, ever make, you can never make 100% people happy. I've learned that in my years in public service. You can never make anyone 100% happy.
But all we've been asking for is transparency.
It has been transparent.
It has not been transparent.
Well, I'm not gonna get into the whole transparency argument.
It's not the answer you want, and unfortunately, we don't always get the answers that we want.
But we have no voice. We have no voice, and it represents 40% of the revenues the taxpayers pay into the city of Newport. And we have no voice in whether or not those expenses are bona fide or not. And that is wrong. 40% of the total revenue that's paid into the city is represented by water and sewer budgets, and we never get to ask questions about it. We never get to vote on it. And we have no idea what the expenses are because no...
They've never voted on it.
They've never. It's an enterprise fund.
It doesn't matter.
It takes what it takes to operate.
I'm not gonna argue enterprise funds.
Mr. Mayor, you interrupt, you interrupt me, and when I do the same to you...
You have other questions related to your...
Mr. Mayor, I was not finished, and you interrupted me.
Well, do you have other questions?
I, Mr. Mayor, I am going to continue where I left off. We do not know whether or not these expenses are justified or not because they're not transparent. They just get lumped into these categories, and there's no explanation as to why. And that's what we've been asking for, and we have not gotten it. At every single bend, we have been basically marginalized and told we're not talking about it or we're done, or whatever the case is. Perhaps if everything was out there and fully transparent, we could look it over, ask some questions, and we'd be satisfied. But at every bend, when we try to make public documents requests or whatever, we don't get the documents we asked for, we're told it's gonna be a $350 investigation process. That tells me that they're just trying to hide the information from us. And if they're trying to hide the information from us, then it makes us ask why. So, if you want the problem fixed, then make it transparent. It's 40% of the revenue that we pay into the city. 40%. We deserve to know what it is. And no, the auditors are not gonna pick up on it. There is a whole disclosure at the beginning that says they accept the information from the city officials in good faith. So, read the front page of the audit.
I know the audit, yeah, I know the audit.
Well, it's not a forensic audit.
I'm not arguing anymore with you. It's beating a dead horse. It's really truly beating a dead horse.
I got a message, I think.
Everybody keep watching.
Okay. Is that going again?
It's going.
Okay. Anything else? Any of the other articles? There are none? Okay. Okay, at 7:18, I'm gonna open Newport City Council meeting. Call the meeting to order. All members of the council are present. Others include James Johnson, Clark Treasure, and Laura Dogan, the city manager. We need to approve the minutes of February 27, 2023.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Vashar. Is there a second?
Second.
Said by Ms. Pedersen. Discussion on the motion on the minutes. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Next item is comments by members of the public. Mr. Wilson had a couple.
I'm a part of the public too, whether you like it or not. Got three things to do tonight. First one from the council and probably everybody in the city. Congratulations to the North Country High School girls. Two state championships in three years, and this year they were perfect, 24 and all.
First time in the history of the school.
Yeah. And now, as president of the council, we have two departing members. And I'd like to present this plaque to Melissa Pedersen for an associate, in appreciation of your service to the city of Newport as a member of the Newport City Board of Aldermen from 2019 to 2023. And there's a little token from the city. And now, this is kind of a tough one. As the mayor says, some of you might be dancing in the street tomorrow.
8 o'clock.
I've sat beside Paul for about 21 years now. And we haven't always seen eye to eye, but I really gotta say, if we probably asked him to take his shirt off, he's probably got Newport tattooed on his chest because he's done a heck of a lot for this city. And this is in appreciation for your service to the city of Newport for 26 years. Board of Aldermen from '97 to 2009, and then the mayor from 2009 to 2023. 26 years. He's got me beat by three, but I'll never catch him.
And he's among the 30 mayors.
Can I, I can, can I add one more thing to this? So, I just wanna say, as you transition out Paul from being mayor to being a former mayor, former alderman, I would like to say part of that transition, I have the certificate for you. It's, it's the official membership for Paul Minnet by unanimous vote. It's, it's the official membership for Paul Minnet by unanimous vote. Has been accepted into the exclusive Monday Night Howling Harmonica Players Club. This is a lifetime membership that commences on March seventh, twenty twenty-three at eight P M. And as you were invited in, because we know you will uphold the motto of, the club motto is, play with fun, perfection is optional.
I'm learning how to play the harmonica. It's a good stress relief, I'm learning how to play the harmonica. Thank you, thank you. There were no other comments by members of the public. We'll move to new business, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I do, I've got some relicience renewals. As I said last minute, you don't, there's nothing you have to sign anymore, they just send you the approval or not. So, first one is Jasper's Tavern. They've got a first-class, third-class, and an outside consumption permit, these are all renewals they've had before. And the other one is for the Compound Incorporated, which is Miller's Pub at the country club. And they've got a first-class and third-class licenses. I don't, if anybody heard any, anything, problems either of those Travis, so just renewals. So if you get a motion to approve the licenses for Jasper's Tavern and Miller's Pub.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve those two licenses for Miller's Pub and Jasper's Tavern.
A motion made by Mr. Charbonneau, is there a second?
Second. Second, that's fine.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson, discussion on the licenses, then all those in favor say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
Okay, that's all I get for new business.
Mr. Charbonneau, Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any new business.
Uh, no.
No, thank you.
No new business, okay? We'll move on to old business. Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, I've got a note here for Presumsec Bank for a new cruiser. Travis tells me that here, and he's anxious to get it. So we need to approve this as a place for each person to sign. That's a three-year note, forty-nine thousand, forty-nine thousand, fifty-eight dollars and no cents, at four-point-seven-four percent interest for three years. It's in the cycle for, for get a motion to prove that, and everybody sign it. I and Travis would appreciate it.
Need a motion?
I'll make the motion that we pay for the new cruiser we get.
Now she says it's already here, right?
Well, the cruiser had been approved a long time ago, it's just now getting here.
So motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, seconded by Mr. Charbonneau, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
I'll call on tomorrow, I have a couple of checks to figure out.
Any other old business? I'm new, I'm old, we're in old now.
Yeah, we're all, yeah.
Any other old business, no? Mr. Charbonneau?
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No. I've got some old business. Last week when we, I thought I emailed all the council members. But last week when we approved the, here, we'll pass this out. When you approved accepting the air mark, there was a resolution that needed to be signed. Here. Basically, once the council approved accepting the air mark, all the documents came in. And since you gave the committee authorization to kind of work up, to work on the documents, we've already consulted a grant expert. And she's the one that said we really need a resolution to formally, with a grant number, to formally accept it. And that's what this is. I apologize for not getting it to you earlier. But it's just, this makes it, this formally accepts the funding and the questions from the council. And I look at this as one of my last acts. And even though I'll be gone, I'm gonna be working on that project to see it through to fruition.
I hope so.
No, no, I'm gonna be working on it to see it through to fruition.
Is this something we need to vote on? Do we need, or should we just?
We should have a vote, we have a vote, and then we can just sign. I have extra copies, is anyone from the press? Anybody wants a copy, I have extra.
So just so, I mean, I think.
You want to read it?
Yeah, I'll read it, I just think we should get out there. It says, whereas the city of Newport, Vermont, has applied for funding under the Community Project Funding, or C P F, awards administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, it has been received, has received an award of funds under said provisions, and whereas the Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, has tendered a grant agreement, federal award identification number, F A I N, B twenty-three C P V one-five-one-zero, to this municipality for said funding. Now therefore, be resolved as follows. One, that the legislative body of the city of Newport accepts and agrees to the terms and conditions of said grant agreement. Two, that James D. Johnson, city clerk and treasurer, is hereby designated as the person with overall administrative responsibilities for the HUD community project funding activities related to this grant agreement. And three, that James D. Johnson, city clerk treasurer, is hereby designated as the authorizing official A O to execute the grant and other documents as may be necessary to secure these funds. Passed on this day, the sixth day of March, two thousand twenty-three.
Questions? Then we would need a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve this resolution for the grant, for their grant span.
Okay. Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded made by Mr. Charbonneau, seconded by Mr. Vashar, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Just for reassurance, because, you know, Jim said that the question came up about triggering an audit, a single audit, and seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand is the trigger number, not five-hundred thousand. For single audit, you'll.
Yeah, I think it's seven.
Yeah, it is seven fifty.
I'll make sure everybody has copies. I'll scan it and copy it. I don't have any other, trying to think if I have any other, no, I don't have any other old business, anything?
Um, I, I guess I would like to just, if I can, it's old business because I've been here around, but I just want to say some thank yous to folks. I would like, you know, Tom Byrne here, thank you for your patience in when I came on board to help me understand infrastructure to, it was a really, really steep learning curve, and I know I only scratched the surface, it was those outwater outlets, something or others that really had me stumped. And thanks for your patience in helping me understand infrastructure because that's really what the city, as the council's, most of your time is spent, we're on infrastructure. All the other, you know, social issues and stuff that everybody else is talking about, that's not really under the purview of the city council, it's infrastructure. Mike Brown, your enthusiasm just draws one in, I'm not quite sure, is he here? No, well, okay, well, I'll just say this anyway, resistance is futile. Somehow I've managed to volunteer for the Turkey Fest if they have it this year, so there we go, you just cannot resist. So, you know, Chief Bingham, thank you for your absolute steady leadership of the police department. I think it's a department to be proud of, the guys do a great job, I've told you. Just, not that I was looking to watch anybody, but just because I'm downtown all day long. Couple of times, and I had just witnessed walking by their interaction with folks, and it was really very impressive. Their de-escalation, their, you know, all that kind of stuff, it was, and I know that they can be the other side too, when they need to. But just for day-to-day out there, it was really good, so thank you, them, and thank, and your staff, your officers. And always taking the time to answer anything, but I haven't had a lot of discussions with you because I don't get into trouble, but when I have talk with you, it's been really great. John, thanks for your fire department, that really pulling that department together, doing such a great job. Once again, I haven't ever needed your services, I hope I don't. But I'm, I rest assured knowing that you and your guys are there and doing such, such a great job. Frank and Rob, Frank, Jeanie, and I know that, I understand, I haven't had really much interaction with you, but I hear through the grapevine that you.
You've been busy my year.
Yeah, that you dove right in and actually read the zoning laws and things like that, so that's great, thank you. And Rob's not here tonight, but again, I have limited interaction with him, but I know that he's busy and appreciate his work. Becky, keep those spreadsheets calculating, please, you do a good job with those, and it's very much appreciated. Also, to the, and this, I guess, is really, really, not that your department heads don't count, but to all those frontline workers out there who are out there at midnight picking snow and plowing roads and cleaning clogs out of the sewer thing. I mean, there's some of the nastiest jobs that have to be done to keep a city running. And it's, I think, that, I don't think, in general, the population appreciates the work that they do out there. They do hard work, and they're out there doing it, and I, as a resident, I really, really appreciate that. And from a, borrowing from the business world, where I spent most of my life, you know, they say that the C E O, whoever's in charge of the company, can go away for a week and no one will, no one will miss him. You miss, the janitor's gone for a week, you know he's gone. So, thank you all for the work that you do and the leadership you provide, and the frontline people who are out there doing the work.
I can't follow that.
You're not leaving, you don't have to.
All right, well, I guess I'm gonna get the last word in before we adjourn. Since this is my last meeting after twenty-six years and fourteen as mayor, I do want to thank the residents for their support over the years. It's been quite a ride from when I was first elected to today. We have had many highs and lows over the years, and I strongly believe Newport is on the right path for, for the future. One thing that I still remember to this day, I get kind of emotional, telling my father that as a kid I would be mayor of Newport. And I know he's looking down on me today, smiling. Because he never lived to see me achieve my goal, and I am so proud, and I know he's proud of me. Over the years, my only promise was to the residents was to work hard. I never made false promises, I just said I'd be there every day, working hard for the best interests of Newport. And I feel I've done that. I hope, I, when I first got elected, I told John Ward, the city manager, you can expect me to be a much more involved mayor than just running meetings and driven cuttings. I got us known by going to Montpelier, meeting with the governor, testifying before legislative committees, things that didn't happen in the past. I kept track of, even though it was around the country, I joined various lists just to see what's happening in other communities, just for my own knowledge and, and things like that. But groundwork has been laid for many projects. We know that Trac will be moving, or is gonna be moving to the old Bogner facility. So that was one of those E B five properties, so that's good news, that's retaining twenty-five jobs and gonna create possibly twenty-five to forty more jobs. That's, that's a real good positive aspect. We hear about housing. People forget, there's been a lot of housing created over the years. Yes, we're still desperately short for workforce housing and for people wanting to move here. But I was just thinking of some of the past projects. Rural Edge had the Lake Bridge project over here across from N E K T V. That revamped an entire neighborhood and created much-needed housing. We've got Lagos, who's gonna have four units if it all goes well with their funding. We've got the Rural Edge project planned at Sacred Heart. That's a project for the future, that's gonna be a real positive win-win. And we have the planned private development over off the east side, that's for homes. People forget that the old hospital, O E S U building, became apartments, and those were much needed. Man from Agarrento's built two units, and Rural Edge, the Lake Bridge project. So things have been moving, it may not be on the front page, or it may not happen overnight, things do take time. And I think the groundwork has been laid. We've seen the much-needed modernization of our municipal plan. It was really tired and needed to be updated. And our zone bylaws are currently being worked on and modernized and to bring us into the future, to help eliminate some of the bottlenecks. And I'm pleased to see the state might be lessening some of the Act two fifty restrictions that will certainly help with housing development, just for grins. Anybody, like these eighteen houses that are planned for the east side, even though we have water sewer allocations, things like that, they still gotta pay a state permit. I think it's two or three thousand per house, which adds to cost. And so it's glad to see myself working with the other mayors and the mayor's coalition that we hopefully got them talking about that in Montpelier to revamp Act two fifty because that's something we've been working on for quite a few years, because there's so much duplication in cost. That's another thing that I think that I feel very proud that we're working with the other mayors and getting things through because we're all creatures of the state, unfortunately, and we have to follow what they say to us, but. But as far as thank yous, I thank the residents, but I want to thank the entire city council, all the department heads, all the employees. It's your dedication that makes Newport a great place to live, work, and play. And for that, I want to say thank you, and I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.